Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the October 6, 2025 Select Board Meeting. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the agenda tonight, we will start with mail, and then we'll move on to Department and Board updates from Parks and Rec and the Charter Committee. We've got a couple appointments to make. Then we'll have a public hearing for Tavon and the Square's liquor license change. Moving on from there to public input and members' updates, over to Select Board discussion on the application to use the Common and the special town meeting warrant. Town Administrator update. Minutes, and we will promptly adjourn at 8:35.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. We have some vacancies in boards and committees that are appointed by the Select Board. We've got the Agricultural Commission, Clean Lakes Committee, Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Economic Development Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personnel Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, ZBA. Appointed by Littleton Electric Light and Water Department is one member for their Finance Committee. And, okay. And we have sign up, if you haven't already, to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. Scan the QR code on your screen, or register by going to www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activity, town meeting changes, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events. Stay informed. Select Board Office Hours. The Select Board Office Hours are scheduled for the following dates. All office hours will take place at Rubin Hall Library in the Historical Room unless indicated otherwise. Tuesday, October 7, from 10:30 to 12:30 with Chairwoman Karen Morrison. Monday, October 13, from 11:00 to 1:00 with Vice Chairman Matthew Nordhaus. Isn't that Columbus Day?
Oh, it is. Okay, I'll have to move that. Didn't realize it was. Okay. I will fix that.
Wednesday, October 22, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM with Mark Rambacher. Friday, October 24, from 10:00 to 12:00 with Gary Wilson. What kind of government structure do you want for Littleton? Join this public forum to provide input for Littleton's Charter Committee to help ensure recommendations meet the needs of our residents today and in the future. Tuesday, October 14, 6:00 PM, the Center on Shattuck Street in the Multipurpose Room. Learn what a town charter does, hear progress to date, research observations and emerging themes, share your ideas, suggestions, concerns, and questions. Hosted by the Town of Littleton, Littleton Charter Committee. Any questions or anything? Email chartercommitteequestions@littletonma.org. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Parks and Rec. Vote to approve a 40B exemption for Perry Kenny, Margot Gillan, and Abigail Warnock.
Come on, come on. Don't be shy.
Come on down.
Okay, so this is just standard practice here. If we have anyone that works for the town that would like to do any program or work for us for just some after-school hours. So Perry Kenny and Margot Gillan are both, man, that has to come back. Are both teachers, and they would like to do some after-school programs with us, as always. The time that they put into the programs with Park and Rec do not interfere with their school time at all. And then Abigail Warnock is also a teacher, and she's going to help us with out-of-school time programming. So that would be like Veterans Day or February Vacation. So the 40B exemption is required for all three of these individuals to be able to do programs with us.
No questions.
Could you just explain more exactly what they will be doing?
Sure. So Perry Kenny and Margot Gillan are both doing different programs. So Perry Kenny does an after-school program with kids at Shaker Lane. And then Margot is doing a cross-country program. And then, like I said, Abigail Warnock would work for us for programs that we do on days that the school is closed.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take a motion.
Move the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract and approve the exemptions of Perry Kenny, Margot Gillan, and Abigail Warnock as municipal employees in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. I'm going to be saying that a lot tonight.
Yes, you are.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I have the documents if you guys want to sign them.
Is it just the chair? I think it's just the chair that signed it.
Is that the same thing as this?
It's just on the last page. But yeah, took your touch.
Congratulations on a great event.
Thank you guys so much for coming. I really appreciate it. Yeah, we estimated to have around like two, what was it? 2,500 people come through during the day. So, and it was lovely to see Representative Arciero. It was really cool for him to come out and have a great day with everybody else.
That's it, right?
That's it. Just the three.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
There is one more there. Sorry.
I'll sign that one. All right, thanks. You too. Okay, Charter Committee update.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, Betsy Bowling. So just a quick update on what's going on at the Charter Committee. We have been spending the last month or two on elected boards and directors. So this is going through the process of all these different boards, and should they continue to be elected? Or should we, and some of them also appoint their own directors as opposed to having to go through the other process. So rather than, originally, we thought we'd have people from the committee go out and talk to these people individually and bring that back, but we determined, no, we really need to have them in so everybody could hear everything. And so it took a lot of time, but it was very worthwhile and very helpful to do that. And we don't have any decisions on any of that, so we're going to deliberate this week. We have a meeting on Thursday. We'll deliberate on that. So this isn't to give any updates, just that we spent a lot of time doing that. I'm sure you've heard that from people because everybody's bringing in to talk to us. One of the things that I would like to talk about is when people hear about, especially if we talk about people being appointed, whether it's to a board or an employee is appointed by somebody at Town Hall as opposed to by the board. I think people in their heads have this idea of an appointment, that there's somebody in a back room, you know, saying, "Okay, you're it, you're it, you're it," and that's it. And that's not obviously the process. If somebody's appointed, there still is a process. There's still a committee. You're still going to bring all the right people together that have a vested interest and that know things and so on, and HR and so on. It's just that more, if you run the process through, then somebody owns the process to get it through. And you've got a full-time, you know, town employee who's running the process to go through. So I think it's just an important point for people to understand that, that when we talk about appointments, it's not a one person deciding. It's still the same as today. What we found today in a lot of the discussions, especially on some of the boards where, you know, the things the consultants tell us to look for on these things is, are they usually competitive elections? And is it a knowledge-based thing? Is it like any good, well-meaning person could run for this and take this position and do it on the board that we're talking about? Or do you really have to have some particular skill or knowledge to do it well? And so we found out is a lot of places where we have elections, in effect, people are appointed. Because what happens is, there is no contested. It's just one person. What happens, we have an opening, and so the people that are on the current committee or board go out and they find somebody. They use their networks and other people's networks, and they find someone who's qualified and interested, and they say, "Oh, great. Either get your 50 signatures, or just do a write-in, and we'll get you on the board anyway." So in effect, they're being appointed. It's just, it makes it look like it's an election. We want to go through the election process. So those are the things that we're looking at, what we'll talk through later this week on some of these. Should some of these be appointed, really be appointed rather than that? Because there's some downsides to that. So one of the things we talked about was, you know, when people get the, especially the write-in votes with someone, "Oh, you know, the big joke is, I got seven votes, you know, I'm in." Well, you know, and it was a good person, and, you know, all that was fun. It was good. But you could have the wrong people come in and do that, too. And so you're actually at some risk for doing it that way as opposed to having a more defined process. The other thing we talk about is, in some cases, some people might be very interested in serving and helping, but they really don't want to be elected. They don't want to go through that process. Appoint me, fine, but I don't want to go through the election process.
I can't imagine why not.
Yeah, I know, exactly. So these are just some of the, you know, the conversations we've had and so on going through. So again, we're going to talk about that more this week. Then it did impact our timeline a little bit. Right now, we're a little behind our original timeline, so we'll see how that goes. We're going to try to make it up, but, you know, you do this once every 20 years. You need to do it right, not hurry it on. So that's where we're headed. That's our approach. The other thing that came up that was kind of interesting, that we did not expect when we started, was talking about, excuse me, Littleton Light and Water. So it turns out through the charter process, we could combine those two boards. So there's a fact one. Because right now, when we have people around, we want them to run for both Light and for Water. And they run as one board, one meeting, they have one meeting, but there's two different elections. And so you could have a case where somebody runs for one and not the other, and that would kind of just disrupt things at Light and Water, according to the people who know. So people were interested in pursuing that, so that the consultants had some things from other towns they had done, and Light and Water actually went out and had their consultants or their lawyers look at some wording and so on. So that is something that we're pursuing, and it may very well come through. I haven't still heard anything back saying why that, we shouldn't pursue that. We spent a lot of time on that. That was kind of an interesting thing, like, huh, but, so.
Yeah, because that wasn't originally part of your, what you were setting up to review, right?
No, it wasn't. As we talked to people, that just kind of kept coming, "Well, you know, we have to get people to run for both," and says, "Well, it's something we could address, and we can through the charter. You can."
Is that something you're looking for, whether they should be elected or appointed as well?
No. Well, I shouldn't say that, that the bowling says no. We're going to talk about it on Thursday before. Look at all those things. I think a lot of us probably have opinions on either individual boards or philosophy based on this kind of a board or that kind of, what they're, how community-oriented they are versus other things and so on. Because the other part with this was also the Fire and Police Chief was another discussion on this all in the same line, like, do they report to the Select Board, do they report to the Town Manager or Town Administrator, whichever way to go? Although I think it's pretty clear the committee's going to recommend we use the term Town Manager. And I think we had this discussion before. That in itself doesn't mean anything. It's just a title. And what happens in the charter is what determines is what the responsibilities and authority that that person would have. Okay, that, and then the public forum, which, thank you very much for that plug. Tuesday, October 14, so people that are out there, if they want to know more, understand the process more, what a charter is, how we got here, what we're doing, what the process is, and have any questions, you can come Tuesday, October 14, to the Center on Shattuck Street at 6:00. And we'll be happy to answer questions and share anything we can.
Betsy, is the October 14 event, is that more of a briefing, or is that more of a gathering input? Or is it a little bit of both?
It's mostly a briefing, I think. I mean, there's just too, we've gone through so much knowledge gathering to get here. It's really just not a, but anybody that has an idea or a thought or opinion, we want to hear it. And we've been told that when the boards come in, you can tell someone we're a little bit nervous and like, "If you leave here and say, 'Oh, I meant to say this,' or 'I wish I had said that,' well, just call us and tell us." I mean, this is not a, we're not trying to get you on anything. We want to hear from people. And if there's something that we're going one way, and if we knew that, it would make a difference, and we want to hear it. So let's just add something. Okay?
So I've actually attended the last two meetings, and I found it fascinating sitting there, listening to when all these other boards come in and talk about how they hire the directors, because I don't think any two followed the same process, right? And even to subordinates of the director, how they were hired was also very different, depending on the board. So standardizing that process will be a good thing for us. I will say, I was also very impressed with, so the other thing that came up is, a lot of the boards, like Betsy said, they basically have to recruit for new members, I mean, we've all been there, having to recruit new members to run for an elected position. The library has started doing something that, where they actually hold info sessions to like, what does it mean to be a trustee? What does it mean to be a friend? And it's basically a start of, like the Citizens Academy, we talked about before, that I really strongly think we need to pursue further, so that people actually know what the Planning Board does, what the Select Board does, and all these boards. Because if we did more of that, we could generate more interest in these positions, and we wouldn't have to be the ones sitting up here.
Yeah, well, the library also said, I thought it was very good of them, I think, just to also branch out. Because if you're just talking to people you know, well, then it's just the same circle over and over again. It's like, really wanted to branch out, get some people that we've never even known about or considered, so. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chad, thank you. Appointments. Vote to appoint Alex McCurdy as the retiree representative to the Insurance Advisory Committee with a term expiring June 30, 2026.
Nobody here? Nope.
Hello.
Hello.
Michelle Viber, Human Resources Director. This is pretty straightforward. We'll give you a little history. We have begun conversations regarding our health insurance and potentially making plan design changes. As part of that process, there are two committees that we need to establish. One is our Insurance Advisory Committee, and the other is our Public Employee Committee. On those committees, there are retired, there is a retiree rep, which before you is Alex McCurdy. The town, as the public appointing authority, needs to establish Mr. McCurdy as the Insurance Advisory Committee rep. It makes sense because the Public Employee Committee also has a retiree rep. We tried to keep the same membership, and he has been named by the Retiree State County Municipal Employee Association. They appoint him on the Public Employee Committee. So in trying to keep the same membership on the IAC and PEC, we are recommending he be on both. The non-union representative, we only have on our Insurance Advisory Committee. The town clerk, in conjunction with the town clerk, she recommended that we appoint the Select Board.
So I just had a question. As I was reading this, there's seven, there's, this is an eight-member committee. Seven of them duly elected, appointed by organizations of the employer. So who?
So those are the unions. So each union gets one member on the committee. So it's usually the union president unless they deem somebody else, but they do that.
So we have seven unions that are doing these appointments?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And they've appointed people?
Yes.
Okay.
We are in the process right now of the Insurance Advisory Committee is done, pending this one, and then the Public Employee Committee will be next.
Okay. So, okay. Move the Select Board vote to appoint Alex McCurdy as the retiree representative to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Move the Select Board vote to appoint Tim McCuskey as the non-union representative to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got 10 minutes before the appointed time for the hearing.
Do you do public input?
Yeah. Public input, anyone?
Shocking. Shocked.
Does anybody want to do a member update?
I have a couple small things. One is, for those interested in the Orchard happenings, Mr. Brandsfield will be doing an open house on October 18, Sunday, October 18, from 2:00 PM till dark. I, it's fascinating what he's doing there. It's a beautiful place. I hope the weather's good. But I would encourage anyone who is even slightly interested in the Orchard to go and see what he's doing. Also, I want to thank EHS for the COVID and flu clinic. My arm is still a little sore, even though it's been more than a week, but it's great that we can get access to that. It's really great. So I appreciate the, I appreciate the, all the outreach and diligence. I know. What's the date of the second one? Can you tell me?
I can.
Will you?
Yes, okay. October 21.
Thank you. I'm not going to get, I'm not going to go back and get more.
You know?
I feel good.
Okay.
I'm done.
Looking.
Mark?
So I wanted to, it was a busy weekend in Littleton. The Lyceum on Friday with the Love Dogs was a great concert, very well-attended. Went to the Country Fair on Saturday, which also was very popping. Fire Station was happening, and Oktoberfest. So thank you for everyone that participated in the events, and thanks to all the staff and everyone that put them on. They were great. In addition, on the weekend of October 17 to the 19, the Friends of the Library will be having their semi-annual book sale over in the library. So that's Friday, I believe it's Friday evening, and then Saturday and Sunday during the day. I held office hours a few weeks ago now, it seems. It seems like it was just yesterday, but. And one theme that kept coming up is customer service, that we need to do a better job of customer service through out-town departments. People were getting frustrated that they would call and people wouldn't call them back, right? And it wasn't like one department. It was multiple. So we should figure out what we can do to reiterate that we are a customer-facing organization and be responsive, so.
Yes, sir.
So that's all I have.
Okay. I was at Oktoberfest, too. Perfect weather, great attendance, and many thanks to Parks and Rec for putting it on. Personally, I loved having adequate parking over at the high school, so hopefully they'll be continuing with that next year. The podcast was with, the most recent one was with Charlotte Dolins and Michelle Zelenka to discuss the Sustainability Committee's work, specifically Article 13 of the Climate Emergency Declaration and a Climate Action Plan. So anybody who is interested in Article 13, or would like to know more about the Climate Action Plan or Sustainability Committee, encourage you to listen, and Charlotte's got lots of good stuff to tell you. I attended a Shaker Lane Forum on September 29. It was pretty good turnout, all things considered. There were about a dozen people there, including some of Butters and new folks to Littleton, so that was nice. I don't know when the next forum is. I meant to look that up. I'll catch that up in a minute.
Is there another one before town meeting?
There is. There is. I'll look it up.
Let's say like the 21st seems to be the date I remember, but.
September 30, I had office hours in the Center on Shattuck because the library was closed. Many thanks to those who came. And then over the last week or so especially, we've been talking a lot about childcare at town meeting, and we've got that all ironed out, it looks like, by and large, so we'll have. The Boy Scouts will be in the cafeteria to help keep kids entertained, whose parents are voting and speaking and listening and such. There will be drop-off care in the sixth grade corridor, probably, for ages five and up with Littleton Public Schools staff and volunteers from the high school. And there will be care, drop-off care for ages three to five in the library, and that is sponsored by and manned by Parks and Rec.
Cool.
Yeah.
Wow, that's great.
So we're hoping that will help encourage and just make it possible for folks to make it on October 28 at 7:00 PM. Met with Justin and Steve to discuss town meeting presentations for Shaker Lane. Everything progresses apace. No real news there. Let's see. Oh, I wasn't sure the Planning Board had requested Littleton email addresses. Is that something we actually have to vote on, or is that something that can just be done? Did anybody have any questions about that?
I'm in favor of it, frankly. I-
It's just a funding thing, right? We need to, we should probably have Nancy look at what it would cost for most of the boards.
I already did. It's $31 per month per person, so it's about $10,000 a year.
For?
For all the boards.
Right, that's what. We're right now running at about 8,500. So for the individuals to have everybody to have their own email address, this is, the Board of Health does. So they had it because they were pretty, they were autonomous. I mean, they were, you know, it was out of Neshoba. So now that that is not the case, there could be one Board of Health email that goes right into Francis or Heidi, the Administrative Assistant, and then dispersed accordingly. And there is four individual ones for the Charter Review Committee, but that was, there was a sunset associated with that. When Ryan originally had established that, there was an understanding of a sunset. It was not going to be permanent. And I can, let me, let me just look. So that was a conversation I had with Nancy on Friday. Just, here it is. Cost breakdown, so we've got. Okay, so. So Littleton PMBC has one email. PRC E-commissioners have one email. Historical Commission, one email. Sustainability Committee has one email that goes, that is directed to go to one particular person. The Select Board has individual ones, but as I explained before about the Board of Health and the Charter, they are, they're against the norm. Trust Fund Commission has one email. So we're looking at costs, at its, so the boards with emails, which are 26, it's $832 per month. That, that, it's about $10,000 a year, as it is. It's $31.80 per user per month.
That is more than I ever would have thought it would be.
Me, too.
Exactly. So, and then the other thing is, and then it's the matter of maintaining cybersecurity training. And not everyone does that, that currently has one. And that's another thing.
I don't think, I guess, I don't think we need to give everyone on every board an email address. But I think regulatory boards especially, like, I can't imagine that I would be using my personal address for all the Select Board emails I have. And I can see the Planning Board getting an equal number of emails and conversations and communications. It makes sense to me that the Board of Health and the Planning Board, and, you know, the White Light and Water Commissioners maybe, and perhaps the ZBA, could have, would have their own email addresses if they have to do a lot of communication. The other boards, if sustainability is okay with a single email, or, you know, the rest of them are okay with a single email, that's great. Like, let them continue that way.
Okay.
But I would absolutely encourage, if the boards want to use that, it's great.
I would also encourage Nancy to look at the email light, because I think she, I think the email system we have set up is really meant for town employees and not for board members, and that's why it's so- for board members, and that's why it's so expensive. Like, the whole running Mimecast on all of our attachments is just silly, right? It's meant to prevent me from infecting a town computer, but I am never, ever on a town computer, right? It's, we're paying for things for the boards that we don't need.
Like, we don't all need one drive, for example.
Right.
And some of the other stuff that we get with, with that subscription. So, maybe it, it's hard to untangle it, but I think I'm with Mark. Like, if there's a light version that's just email, that's cheaper, go for it.
Okay, okay. All right.
I think there's a difference between, um, appointed people and elected. I can see why, um, anybody who's elected as an individual should have an individual email address.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense to me. So, for, that would include Planning Board, for example, but not Sustainability.
Yeah, right.
It's interesting, most of it, as we're talking, most of it falls along those lines anyways, owning Board of Appeals, et cetera. Um, but yeah, if we could look into, if there's any way to-
Will do.
Yeah. Thanks.
Understood. And, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, you were correct.
What about?
October 21st.
Oh, sweet.
There is a tour and a question and info session after.
Okay.
At the-
All right, so October 21st for the next Shaker Lane Forum. Great.
Diane wants to say something.
Can I just add that, um, the EHS is going to be, um, doing rides for the night of the town meeting?
Oh.
Oh, EHS is providing rides for town meeting. Okay, great. Um, where would-
Um, 6:45 until 10:00 PM.
Wonderful, 6:45 to 10:00.
More, more information will go on, onto the website.
Okay.
But, um, she did mention it today and, um, so 6:45, I believe, what she said.
Great.
Okay.
Update, update.
Sorry.
Steel and thunder.
It's all right.
Jump into you.
I'm done. Did you want to plug any upcoming events, Diane?
What's that?
Did you want to plug up any upcoming events?
I, I.
Like?
I will be mentioning it on, when I go with Mark again, so that'll be fine. Sorry, sorry.
God, it's fine, please. Yeah, do the rest of it.
All right, uh, so it's 7:03, so we could start our hearing. Tavern in the Square Liquor License Change of Officers, Directors, LLC Managers, and Change of Ownership Interest.
Good evening. My name's Dawson Cooper. I'm an attorney with Upton, Canal, and Devlin, um, here on behalf of Tavern in the Square Littleton LLC. Um, Tavern in the Square's applying for a transfer of ownership interest and a change of their LLC manager from Broadway Hospitality Group LLC to Tavern Holdings LLC. Uh, this is the result of a change in upper-tier ownership structure only as Garnet Station Partners has acquired the business. Um, it's important to note that operationally, nothing is changing. Um, it's still going to be a Tavern in the Square. All of the employees are going to stay the same. Menu's going to stay the same. People, unless you're at this meeting, are probably not going to know that anything has changed at all. Um, just the corporate structure tree is changing names. Um, additionally, it's important to note that these applications have already been reviewed and approved by the ABCC, which is a little bit of a backwards process, but because of the amount of Tavern in the Square locations that had to do these, we did them the other way. So, they've already looked at them, um, got them in order before we brought them to you guys. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but, like I said, operationally, you guys are not going to notice anything different. Um, just kind of change of some boxes there.
It all seems straightforward to me.
Yep.
You read all the pages?
No.
Every single one.
Eighty percent of our packet was, was this document.
Oh, no, no, it's like 95%.
Ninety percent, yeah.
Eight hundred and some pages.
Yes.
Yes.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me. Um, move, select board vote to approve the application of Tavern in the Square LLC for an alcohol, all alcohol beverage on-premise license change.
Actually, wait.
Yeah, did we have to open the hearing?
We have to open and close a public hearing.
Sorry.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second. Actually, do we have to read the notice for the public hearing as well?
I don't have that.
Here, this is it, right? Is that it? Opening it or is that the motion itself?
That's the motion to change.
That's- We moved that we opened the public hearing for the change in Tavern in the Square Liquor License.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Okay.
Any public input?
Any public input regarding the application? Hearing none?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we can vote.
Move the select board vote to approve the application of Tavern in the Square LLC for an al- all alcohol beverages on-premise license change of owners, directors, LLC managers, and change of ownership interest. Requested under Master and Law Chapter 138, Section 12, submitted by Tavern in the Square LLC, 810 Constitution Avenue, Littleton, Mass. With hours of operation Monday through Wednesday, 11:30 AM to 12:00 AM, Thursday through Friday, 11:30 AM to 1:00 AM, Saturday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the check as well for the DMO fee.
That goes to him.
Thank you.
He gets all the money.
Signing this.
Is that for all of us or just you?
For all of us?
I think it's all.
Okay. We're scrolling, we're scrolling through 800 pages. Let me see, can I see somebody's printed-out agenda?
Here.
It's taking six years to scroll up.
Yeah, I know, that's hilariously. So, we do Alex, we do, yes, Alex McCurdy, Tom Chowski.
Yep.
Select board discussion.
Select Board Discussion, An Application to Use the Common by Barbara Ward for a Rally on October 18th, 2025.
We still need to talk about the rules for, oh, sorry, please come up.
So, you have the application?
I do. Could you state your name and?
Oh, Barbara Ward.
Mm-hmm.
H. Spartan, Arrow, Rahood, Littleton, Mass. Yes, we, um, petitioned back in September, uh, because we got notification from the National Group that there was going to be a nationwide standout across the country for Indivisible. And given that we've used the common June, July, August, and September, and we feel that we used it in good faith, kept it pristine. I think everybody respected it according to what guidelines we had. But I applied for, um, uh, application this time because we think, or we thought at the time, that we were going to try and have a speaker. And as of today, we are confirmed that we have Jamie Eldridge coming to speak. So, that would require, um, some kind of speaker system, maybe a podium, maybe a table, a little bit more than, uh, probably a little less than we had in June, but a little more than what we usually have. So, I just wanted to be sure that we had access to the common and that we could use the electrical facility, facilities, and be in the good graces.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay, we, and just, attendance could be anywhere from one to 200 people. We have a registration system. Very often, more people show up than what we register, but we'll keep you posted if you want.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move the select board vote to approve the use of the Lower Littleton Common for a pro-democracy standout on October 18th, 2025, from 10 to noon.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we've got vote to approve, sign, and post the special town meeting warrant, discuss the special town meeting schedule, and vote to assign articles for the October 20th, 2025 special town meeting.
Gary and Chuck get them all.
As usual.
Makes sense to me.
Um, the, uh, as the articles, uh, that were, uh, recently, uh, uh, different committees, uh, right now, the Select Board has unanimously supported articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Uh, no vote was taken by the Select Board on, on 14, and, um, the article number eight, motion will be made on the floor because of the, because of the recent confirmation of the expenditure for the, uh, the, what to be, taking out of the, uh, uh, stabilization account. Uh, and, uh, that's what, uh, is going forward, uh, in regards to that. The other, uh, FinCom has also supported 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 10, and they did not support Article 14. Uh, Trust Fund Commissioners, uh, supported Article 5, and Sustainability Committee, um, in, in combination with the Select Board, uh, approved Article 13. And, uh, that's it.
All right.
Ready to close it? Sign and close?
So, is what, I'm, I'm a little confused by what was in the packet, because it doesn't have any of the, um, endorsements on it. It doesn't say any of the recommendations, and it doesn't have, like, any of the, like, narratives, so.
Right, that, okay.
Even my, tonight is really for the warrant versus, um, the special town meeting report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And for the, the report, if we can speak to the report, uh, is, we'll be at the post office, uh, by Friday of this week, and then it'll be, uh, then, you know, hopefully be mailed out by Saturday, Monday at the latest. And, uh, the postage was delivered to the post office a couple, a few weeks ago.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Move the select board vote to sign and post the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um...
Do we have another meeting before?
We do. We do have another meeting before. Um, I think we've got one on the 20th, right? And we could assign then.
Seems like we should then, when Chuck and Gary are here.
It's the 20th.
Yeah, it is the 20th.
It's the 20th. Okay, schools are closed for Diwali.
Schools are closed for what?
Diwali.
Oh.
But that, but, um, I think offices are open, so I think they're fine.
So, let's do an assignment of the articles on the 20th?
Yep.
Since Gary and Chuck aren't here.
Yeah.
Understood.
I don't think it's going to be-
It's a missed opportunity, but, all right.
I think it would be hilarious to assign every single one to, maybe like 12 of them to Gary and one to Chuck or something like that. All right.
Let it be entered into the record. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes.
Do you have any updates for us?
I've had one, but... No, I do. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, we have our bond rating call next, uh, next week. Uh, actually, it's on the 14th, the SMP for a bond rating call. We have, uh, received all these of questions that we're going to be getting from them and the questions before the test. Uh, they, they tend to go off, off-script quite a lot with, with, with questions, but, uh, we anticipate it's going to be a successful call. Um, Special Town Meeting Childcare, you all received the, uh, the flyer today, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, really, my hat is off to Chairwoman Morrison, who has been very involved in making sure that, uh, this is, uh, the childcare and, uh, and, uh, making it a finely tuned operation along with Superintendent Clinchy, uh, is, is also, uh, making a tremendous effort and working hard and making sure everything is going to be, is going to be fantastic. Uh, also, I have a meeting coming up, uh, with the owner of the point, uh, in regards to the, the camera situation there, especially something, some disturbing thing that was reported just recently, and, uh, and also going back to the fires, uh, with the, uh, electrical, um, charging stations that were over there that, um, I'm not sure that anything was ever resolved on that one. Uh, as I had, I'd mentioned earlier, as part of the town meeting, uh, they, we finally have come to agreement with the insurance company and the, uh, the contractor that to repair the, the damaged areas in 36 King Street, and that is an $87,000, uh, price tag that is on, on us. Uh, of the, the total, the total cost of the, of all the damages was $106,524. And, uh, there's a $50,000 deductible in there, so that was the, that's a, that's a huge chunk of, uh, of what our responsibility is.
So, the 86 includes the 50?
It does.
So, we are responsible for 36, more or less, of the damage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, met today with, uh, the Concord Building and Design Center, uh, the vice president there of some questions that they have in regards to the, the Fort, the project at 410 Great Road, and actually about access and the location in relation to, I know that DOT has expressed concern that what has been proposed, and I believe what has been, uh, what was, um, accepted at the, at the planning board, you have the access for 410 Great Road is directly across the road from the access up to the 410, to the 550 King Street across, you're just like going right across the street on Great Road. And, um, uh, in that, but, uh, DOT has, uh, has, has expressed concern about that, so there is a discussion about moving it down further. Uh, and I would have to show you on a, on a, on a map, but it's a, it's a land swap between, uh, Concord Lumber and , uh, LaPoli Companies and audit, and it's pretty, it's pretty much even, even, even Steven. The question that, um, is still, um, is out there is about the easement down there. And, because that could be used, that area down there, to move that access point further down closer to the light, so there would be a reconfiguration of that light. So, a light would be not only up and down Great Road, but also facing, uh, the-
Exit to 410.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to be there. But there's a lot of questions there, um, that, uh, so I'm going to continue conversations and engage DOT with, uh, with Concord Lumber.
So, like Concord Lumber would get some land behind and, and LaPoli would get the land that Concord Lumber has up next to, to the road?
Basically, basically, LaPoli owns this parcel further on, you know, further down the hill, and Concord Lumber owns this parcel, okay, which is closest to the road.
Okay.
Okay, near where you go on 495, okay? What they would essentially do is switch it.
Yeah, okay.
That's what they're looking to do. Okay, so, and Concord Lumber is, is, is great with that, uh, but they are, uh, there are still some ongoing concerns that, or he, he was posing for, um, DOT, which I, obviously, I, I'm not in a position to, uh, to answer, so I'm going to try and coordinate that meeting, uh, with DOT for him. Um, okay, um, uh, business, uh, business recognition, and there is some, so, um, what I would like to propose to, to do is, uh, every month with the newsletter, uh, to identify, uh, a Littleton business and, uh, highlight them, uh, and take pictures, interview the, um, uh, the proprietor, the manager, or anything like that, and make that part of the newsletter, and maybe even, you know, increase it, have maybe a- couple, because there are over 300 registered businesses here in Littleton. And I had shared with the Select Board during my update a narrative that I think I would propose to be sending out to everybody that has a, that has a business certificate through the, through the town clerk's office. And as they come in, it's, as, and Nancy has identified also a portal that would be set up, so anybody that wants to submit their business in, they would have to put their business certificate, the name of the business, and the address, and so on and so forth, and then they would send it in, and it would arrive in the town administrator's office, and Tony, the assistant town administrator, Lisa, or myself, will all get the same email just to make sure we're, we're on top of it. So this is something that I'd like to be able to highlight and, and, and reach out to all the local businesses, and I think it would be, it would be, it would be a good thing to do. I've checked with town council, and they're okay with it, because none of us, I'm not benefiting from it whatsoever, it's a platform, and they're registered users, and if you don't, if registered certificates, if you don't have a registered certificate, you know, that, that's the rule. And it's going to be up to date, and I believe it's, it's not expensive, it's $30 for three years?
Four years.
Four years. Even, 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 even less expensive. So it's, but it's, you know, I think it's good that if we, if we're reaching out to the town, that we, you know, we, we notice, we, you know, we, we give notice to our, the people that made investments in our community. That would be my, that would be my recommendation. DPW is a few weeks, a few weeks away from fall paving starting, and the last rapid flash beacon is going to be installed the week of the 13th at Shaker Lane School.
Nice.
Yep. DPW is installing the bases next week, and the contract will be in the week of the 13th to set them up. Uh, let me see. And we have as far, as far as the climate action plan, one thing that Michelle, the regional energy manager through NIMCOG, has requested is to meet with specific committees, building, I'm sorry, departments, and we're going to have that, that meeting with, it's going to include, everyone is welcome, but, but specifically buildings, facilities, planning, conservation, DPW, Parks and Rec, and the fire department, schools, and LELWD and the schools will be included, and town committees will be invited to an evening focus group. This will be done during the, during working hours, and it would be, it would last approximately one hour.
Is the committee one the same, same day?
I believe so. Which may, yes, that makes sense. Our new veterans agent has been doing a tremendous amount of outreach, and as a result, he's up to 40 clients, so, which is, he's been doing a great job.
Good for him.
Absolutely. And there is a van through, oh, sorry, that was already said. The town clerk, the town clerk's office, 1,300 ballots were sent out, and 30 were returned over the weekend. The, our town clerk should be receiving the clickers back, being renumbered, that's why they were sent out. And originally, they were numbered, I believe, 1 through 700, but because everyone around is particularly that, really, she really took the, Diane took the initiative, and it's starting at 1,700 to 2,400. So when you go to a neighboring community like we did, we're doing for this special town meeting, there is 500 we're borrowing from Bolton and 600 from, from Groton. So those will be much lower numbers, will be way out of the, that area, and so we'll have enough, so, which is a great job by our town clerk. Let me see. October 21st is another clinic, they've had 110 vaccines that, that were, at the last clinic, the fire department had an open house over the weekend, very, very successful. PR and Parks and Rec, Oktoberfest was very successful. Trunk or Treat is October 25th.
Nice.
Whitcomb Field is coming along, if you haven't, have an opportunity to see it, but it is, it is coming along fantastic. It looks absolutely beautiful, and as you know, the tennis courts are all done. And last thing I will, and we're working on making sure of putting out the special, special town meeting newsletter.
Okay.
Great.
The ambulance is in service?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Not like, you know, they finally found the keys.
Quite a journey, huh?
Yeah. Without a doubt. Without a doubt. So, yep.
Fantastic.
Everything is great.
Wonderful. Minutes.
I don't have any corrections on that. It's a miracle.
Let's go.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the Select Board meeting on September 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, we're an hour early. Can we quit?
Yeah, we can.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, Littleton.